Great. Hi, everyone. Welcome to Well I Met Week's Zone 4 Portland School Board Endorsement Interview. Just a few basic things. We're going to take this 45 minutes to an hour or so to attempt to try to get to know you both. We don't guarantee equal time, so we may riff off of follow-up questions if one of us have an answer that we just want to follow up on. That doesn't in any case indicate who we like the best. And it's not really structured as a debate, but you're welcome to respond. We might cut you off. Yeah, so we're going to start with a two-minute introduction: name, current job, what experience you have, any in public service, and why Portland School Board, or why Portland School Board again. And we can start with you, Herman.
Excellent. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to be here. Again, my name is Herman Green. I've been doing this work for over three decades, working with community advocacy for people. I've been on the school board for now four years, well, it'll be four years. And my work is focused on the improvement of literacy and accountability. Why am I doing this? Because it's still necessary and there's a lot of work to be done. And I don't believe this is the season or this is the time for me to let up on the pressure. It's apply pressure on gas, no brakes the whole time, and keep it moving. So I'm happy to be here.
Great. Rochelle?
Yeah. Hi, thanks for having me today. My name is Rochelle Chase Miller, and I am a lifelong Portlander. Grew up attending Portland Public Schools in the 80s and 90s. I didn't graduate from PPS. Right now, we're talking a lot about chronic absenteeism and graduation rates and things like that. And, you know, I'm kind of one of those statistics. PPS is where I learned to read music and-
Hi, sorry, I'm Sophie.
Hi, Sophie. PPS is where I learned to read music and draw the scale and learn all sorts of things. But PPS didn't work for me. And it hasn't worked for too many kids. I love Portland Public Schools. My dad and grandpa went to Jefferson. I went to Lincoln. My husband went to Roosevelt. So these schools are a part of my heritage, and today I have kids that go to our schools. I have a kid at Woodlawn and a kid at Harriet Tubman. My big kid has a physical disability, so I've been through the PPS system navigating equity and access for him throughout the course of his education. And in my day job, I direct a statewide literacy organization, Smart Reading. And we work with pre-K to third-grade students to get them up to reading level. And we have great results. Ninety percent of students who participate in our programs show an improvement in reading. So I know what works. I know how to partner with community-based organizations to bring resources into schools. I know how to get kids reading. I know how to work behind the scenes to impact results. And as Director Green said, this is not the time to, so not the time to let up. This is a moment in our district where we're facing really monumental challenges, and we need people on the board who are going to fight for our kids. And that's what I've done for my entire career, both as an educator and as a mom, as an advocate in the community. So that's why I'm running for the board.
Yeah, absolutely. And can you just remind everyone what your day job is and, you know, what you do outside of the school board?
Oh, yeah, no problems. My day job is a, I'm a senior pastor at Abundant Life PX Church. I am a mentor, a program director for Triple Threat Mentoring, which is a mentoring program that we've established. We've got 95 kids in our program, all coming from different backgrounds. We work with these kids on how to go from where they are to where they want to be. We get each one, reach one. So each kid in our program is responsible for reaching down to the next level and bringing another kid up. We do jobs. We do HBCU trips. We do STEAM involvement, getting our kids, just giving them access and exposure to different things. And then I'm also a, I do a lot. I don't want to keep going into that. Google me. There's a lot out there.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I guess we can start, I have some questions kind of about, I know you had brought up accountability versus, like, or accountability. I know that's been a big topic, kind of discussion in the legislature about more funding versus accountability. I know there's been two camps that have kind of bridged off of like, one says, well, if we fund the QEM, schools are going to be, you know, thriving places for children to learn. I know the other camp's a little bit like Oregon spends in the middle of the pack. And we need to utilize our dollars better as a state. And so I'm curious for both of you, how you strike that balance, you know, where you are kind of on that scale, and also how you define accountability. We can start with Rochelle.
Yeah, you know, I think that, I think accountability is important, but I think there is accountability on the state's end as well. And when you underfund education for three decades, you can't, you can't expect to just, you know, teachers need to be more accountable, districts need to be more accountable for outcomes, when we're not funding the outcomes, even by the state's own metric. So yes, to accountability, and that goes all ways. We need to show up for our kids, and that means fully funding education.
Herman, same question.
Yeah, I'm not going to disagree with her at all. We like to talk about accountability from a, from a state perspective, and we're not addressing the elephant in the room, which is we've been underfunding school for, like she said, the last three decades. Is we've continually given the schools less and less and less, and asked the schools to do more and more and more. And then we wonder why our teachers are going home, and they're working on this stuff at home. They're spending their own dollars to try to make this stuff work. And then everybody keeps coming back and saying, well, y'all just need to do better, do better, do better. We need more. We need smaller classrooms. Where's that money coming from? How are we going to fund those classrooms, you know, cap sizes, to get them where you want them to be? And you don't want to give us the money to do that. We need to take care of our spare kids. Where's that money coming from? We've been funding this to, to a metric that was designed in 1992, and everything has changed since 1992, except for the amount of money that you've given us to care for the kids that has continued to grow every year, year after year after year. And then you keep coming back and saying that, well, and I say you, I'm talking about our state legislators. These are the conversations that I have with them. You're telling us, we need to see you doing more. We need to see you giving more. You've been saying that this is what the quality education model should be funded at. This is how much money we, we should be doing to get the, the level of education that we need. And yet, you have not given us that. You continue to say, I need more from you. I need more from you. I need to see more from you. Well, you can't squeeze blood from a turtle. At some point, you gotta, you gotta stop talking about what is going to, and you gotta give us more. Or you gotta stop saying that you care about kids, and say that you, you know, you care about the idea of kids, but you don't really want to, you know, I don't really want to put my money where my mouth is. What I told them when I had the conversation with them is I said, listen, if we care about kids the way that we say that we care about them, and they mean as much as we say that they mean, then what we need to do is go across the board and say, since the money isn't there, and y'all claim that we don't have it, every department, every grouping, every, whether it be the police, whether it be fire, whether it be, everybody should take a sliver and give it to education. If the kids are truly the future, and that's where we're trying to get to, no, we can't come from one source. But if everybody gave a slice of the pie, if everybody gave a small sliver of what it is that they're getting, then maybe we could make a dent in the education. But we don't want to do that, because everybody starts gripping, I need mine, I need mine. We spend more on garbage than, than we are for, for our kids right now. We need to do better. So those are my thoughts.
Can I add something to my response also? I think it's important to note that Oregon is not in the middle of the pack as far as cost of living goes. So I think we also have a tendency to kind of use false comparisons when we're talking about how we fund schools. And, oh, we've increased funding. Well, increasing under, underfunded schools to a level that is still underfunded is, that's deceptive. And, you know, it costs more. It costs more to live in Oregon. It costs more for Portland teachers to live in the districts where they teach. It costs more for materials and supplies and all of the things. So we also, you know, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. We can't be looking at other states and what they're doing when we are Oregon. We have our own specific set of circumstances, and we need to be funding to those circumstances, not what national trends are doing.
Okay, so with the reality that, you know, schools are underfunded, do you feel that Oregon is utilizing what dollars it currently has to the best of its ability? Or where could the state maybe be a little bit more efficient in terms of, you know, funding its dollars? Or can it be at all?
I think it's important that we lift the cap on special education. We are not serving our students who need the most support effectively, and we're really not even trying to when we don't provide the resources that they need to do well and to thrive. I think that the state's doing well in terms of pouring money into literacy. That's important. As, as someone who works for an agency that is competing for those dollars, they also need to be more clear and more flexible about who can access and resource those dollars so that more community-based organizations can get in there and really start doing the work. You know, I don't, I don't know that it is so much that how we are spending is always the problem, but that there's not enough, and it's not going to the communities who need it the most.
Herman, good question.
I believe that we need to really start looking at not just where we're spending our money, but what we're getting for it. And how is it, how, where's the return on, on what we're putting into it? I believe that that's, that's a big issue right now. And that's part of the reason they keep bringing up this, this conversation around like, well, what are you doing with the money that I've already given you? And, but as, as she stated earlier, and again, this is not an area where we're going to disagree. We're doing the very best that we can with the dollars that you're giving us. The problem is you're just not giving us enough dollars. We, we need more money. So do I feel like they're, I don't know that I want to say that they're, that they're putting the money in the right places, because I don't feel like they do. I feel like the money needs to come to education. I believe that we need to start putting and investing our dollars into our schools, because that's investing our dollars into our kids. You're forcing us to, to argue over the scraps. And you're, what you're doing is you're pitting us against one another, and we're trying to say that you're the bad person, and you're the bad person. And what reality is, we just don't have enough. You need to give us more. I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit here and fight with the person that wants the same exact thing that I want for the kids that I want, want our C of schools in the same light that I do, when in reality, they're just scrapping to survive the same way that I am. So they're not my, they're not my issue. They're not, we need more money coming in. And we have to, like, as loud as we can possibly say it, as often as we can possibly say it, we need more. What you're giving us is great, and I'm not going to turn it down. However, you're not giving me enough. I'm never going to allow you to think that what you're giving me is satisfactory. It's not enough. I need you to start looking at where you're spending your money at. I need you to start looking at, at where you're, where you're investing your dollars, where you're investing your capital, where you're investing your resources. If you can't give us money, then there's got to be something else that you can give us that we don't have to pay for, so that we don't have to spend money on that. We need to start looking at the resources that maybe the state has, that we as a school district can take advantage of without investing capital. We got buildings that are sitting dormant, that the state owns, and why can't PPS, why can't we, our school district, take advantage of those? There's got to be something that we can start doing if we get creative. I believe we have a issue of being uncreative, un-innovative. We're not thinking about what could be done. We're, we're sitting there, we're going to focus on this issue, because that's what everybody wants to talk about. It's the, whoa, it's the money, the money, the money. It's got, it's more than that. We're talking about the essence of what we see, our, our schools becoming, our kids becoming, our future becoming. We're, we're not talking about a few dollars here and there.
Well, if you don't mind, we're going to jump to one of the things you're talking about, which is buildings.
Sorry, can I ask one quick question? So over the past four years, or however long you've been on the school board-
It's going on four. It'll be four.
What, what direct advocacy have you done to, to, can you give us an example or two of where you've been creative, or where you've lobbied the legislature for state leadership to actually get PPS more money? And not, not just on, you know, not just on the dais, not just in school board meetings, but where you have gone outside of that to state leaders?
So I have a consistent meeting that I have with, like, the Lou Fredericks that I have with the Travis Nelsons, our, our representatives, talking about what are we going to do about budgeting? What are we going to do about money? What, how are you guys going to work with us to get more money into our school system so that we can all get on the same page? How are we going to start saying the same thing? So I'm consistently advocating in that regard. If we start talking about, like, what am I doing intentionally to try to move the needle myself? I use my own resources, my own dollars, to create literacy programs so that we can start getting kids in, younger kids in, from the Rosa Parks area, the Caesar Chavez area, the Astor area, so that we can start teaching those kids the science of reading, because I true believe that literacy is king, and that if we teach you how to read today, then you'll understand what to do on tomorrow. So I use resources, I use my resources to do that, without going to PPS, and without going to the district ones. I go to CBOs. I work with CBOs to get CBOs to invest dollars into the kids, into our communities, to pay for their, to pay for their sports stuff, different things, so that we can take some of the pressure off of our families. I'm constantly going after additional dollars in the community, to bring the community together around this issue, because this is an issue that not one organization is going to be able to solve. It's going to take all of us working together, moving in the same direction. All invest in the little money that we can to try to move this needle forward. Because when everybody starts doing it, and it becomes important to everybody, then we're going to start seeing change. Until then, it's just going to be a conversation piece.
School bond.
Nice. Glad we're talking about it.
If I recall correctly, at the most recent board meeting, you said the math isn't mathing. Unpack that for us.
The math isn't mathing. So in the most recent board meeting, what I'm referring to is, I've looked all over, and I can't find, I can't find a, a district that's spending the amount of money on our, on their buildings, on their, their schools, that we are. Half a billion dollars is what we're looking at, close to 450, 460 million. Half a billion dollars on a single solitary building, to me, is astronomical. It's just ridiculous. There's got to be something there that I'm not seeing. So when I called for an audit, my audit was to say, we need to take a look at where we're spending our money, how we're spending our money, and whether or not this is exactly what it needs to be. If it comes back that that's the case, and this is just what it costs, then it is what it is. But I'm struggling with it when we just saw that Beaverton had a school built. They didn't spend half a billion dollars. The, the Lincoln School was just recently built. They didn't spend half a billion dollars. And we've got $366 million sitting in the coffers right now, that have been allocated and designed, designated for Jefferson, and we haven't put a shovel in the ground. Make it make sense to me, is what I'm trying to say. I, this is my first bond. This is the first bond that I've been on the board, and now I'm championing for. And it's not that I don't believe that we need the bond. I believe that we do. It's not that I don't believe that we should be asking for, for less. I believe we should be asking for more. My, my issue is that I just don't believe that a single school should have to cost half a billion dollars.
Should voters vote for this bond?
Absolutely, they should. They should absolutely vote for it. See, you're, you're mixing, again, this is what people, this is what people are doing. So let me, let me catch it up. You're like, so you're mixing up, should we vote for this, or should we? We need every dollar that we can get. We've got a billion dollars in deferred maintenance on the buildings that we have. We need every dollar that we can get coming into the school. The question is not, should we get it? The question is, where should it all be going? Should it all be going on a single school? If we can save $100 million from each one of those schools that, you know, that are supposed to be a half a billion dollars, that's $200 million that we can bring back into the district, that we can then apply to the, the elementary schools, to the middle schools, to a lot of this billion-dollar deficit that we have in deferred maintenance. We need the money coming in. That's not a question. The question is, should it have to go to a single solitary school? And unless you can come back and say that I've done the, I've done the math, I've looked at it, I've checked all the boxes, that's where I'm at. I need, if I'm going to go out there as a community advocate, my name, my name carries weight. I've been doing this, I've been doing this work, working in this community for over 30 years, serving people from the, from the highest to the lowest. If I tell somebody that I've looked into this, and this is what it is, then it is what it is. I'm not, because I'm not going to come back and, I'm not going to lie to anybody about it. This just is what it is. I can't see it right now. And I need you to show me, if you want me to come out and tell everybody, I've looked at everything, all the i's have been dotted, and all the t's have been crossed, and this is how much it costs.
Ballot drop in two weeks. It, it's very unusual to have a school board member questioning the math or the economics of a, of a bond at this stage in the process. What made you decide you need to-
I am not a political person. I don't do politics. I do people. I do real life. I, that's, this, it would be a political, to me, like, a little political thing to sit back and be quiet with my questions, simply because the ballot drops. If I've got questions, guess who else has questions? 100,000 other people out there have questions. So if you can't answer my questions, and I'm asking from a space of, I know that we need this, then how are you, how are you going to make the, the other 100,000 people out there that I'm representative of feel comfortable? I'm, I'm just, I'm not here to do check boxes. I'm not going to do it simply because this is what everybody else is doing. I say what I say, and it is what it is.
Sure, but I guess I'm curious. It feels a little almost backward to us, I guess, as to, you know, you referred to bond in January. You, you kind of have already approved all of this, and then now you're kind of questioning. I mean, there was a whole year leading up to the bond referral. Why didn't, why is this coming up now?
Check the records. Check my receipts. If you go back to August, I was asking the same questions. If you go back to October, I was asking the same questions. I'm the one that called for the audit. The only reason that they're talking about this audit, the only reason that Cornerstone came in is because I brought it up. Check my receipts. I'm not bringing this up, and this is new. I'm bringing it up because I've stated what I've stated then, and you still haven't answered my question. That's, that's what it is. Check my receipts. So I'm not, this isn't new for me. This isn't a, a new stance, like, why are you all of a sudden bringing, there is no all of a sudden with me.
Sure. Although we don't give equal time, I really do want to hear your response on, on this issue.
Yeah, thank you. So I don't have a problem with doing an audit. We should know how money is being spent, making sure that it's being spent responsibly. That's fine. It is, you know, interesting to me, like, there's a year-long process leading up to this bond, and it seems like those questions should be answered before we get to election season. It actually reminds me of the teacher's strike, where there was a year of bargaining going on that led up to the strike, where there were no gains made, and it really seemed like no efforts made to avoid going to strike. I think, I have questions about Director Green's characterization of how the bond funds are being spent. I'm not on the board now, so I'm not the expert, but my understanding, having supported the bond and worked on the bond a bit, is that the funds will cover the deferred maintenance, will cover seismic retrofits, if we do it right. And these high schools have to be rebuilt, particularly Jefferson needs to be rebuilt, and needs to be built in a way that is, gosh, what's the word, restorative and reparative of our community. I think some of the conversations around enrollment are, are not accounting for rebalancing that needs to happen, and redistributing students who are at McDaniel, who are at Grant, who are at Roosevelt, back into the Jeff cluster. So I, I think, you know, the bond is imperative. I grew up, as I mentioned, attending Portland Public Schools, and literally, nothing has been done to those buildings, other than the high schools that have been remodeled, since I was a student there, since my grandfather was a student there in the 30s, in the case of Jefferson. The buildings are falling around, around our kids. There are rodents, there is feces, there are leaking ceilings. You know, in the pandemic, the lack of HVAC, the lack of the, just basic ability to open the windows was a huge problem, and prevented us from being able to return to school in a timeline that I think, you know, a lot of people would have liked to see, but it was really simply that the buildings weren't safe. And that pandemic is behind us now, but we're dealing with climate change. School years are hotter on either end of the school year, school year, excuse me. And these buildings are super hot those times of year, super cold in the winters. And the deferred maintenance hasn't been a secret. It's a long, long, longstanding problem, and it has to be resolved. Learning, you know, there's more that goes into student learning than, you know, just what's in the curriculum and what's in the textbooks, right? Kids need to be in environments that are clean, that are healthy, that are functional, that are equipped for 21st century learning. And right now, that's not our buildings. We talk about accountability, and we talk about outcomes, but we're not giving students the environment, the materials, the resources that they need to be successful. And I think even more than that, the message we're sending to students about the importance of education, the, their importance, when we send them into settings that are dilapidated, and teachers can't teach in those settings either. They've already got the hardest job in the world, and they're trying to do it in classrooms that are broiling hot, or freezing cold, and loud radiators that they can't hear kids over. It's really just unacceptable. This bond is so important in terms of modernizing our schools. The seismic retrofits are a big deal. That's got to happen. And this bond is the opportunity, not just to fulfill our promise to the high schools, but to bring our elementary and middle schools up to standard.
That's where it's a lack, though.
What?
That's where it's a lack, right? So 100% everything she said is right. And she's, she's not wrong in not one thing that, that she stated. The, the element that, that I'm missing, that I feel like we're not talking about enough, is that the bond is what, 1.8 billion, what, 1.8 billion? I think is what we're, we're going after. 1.8, 1.8 billion? Of the 1.8 billion dollars, 1.5, 1.5 of that is going to, has been allocated for three high schools. And so that leaves three left over that's going to go to all the other, other facets. Of that, you, you only, you have a sliver that's been set aside for the deferred maintenance. We're going to, we're going to see some savings, you know, based on the, the small savings that they saw, that they, that we talked about in the last meeting. And so you heard Julia talk about there being additional two, two to three million dollars, maybe, that might go into, might go into some of the schools. Our kids are spending eight of their 12 educational years in dilapidated buildings. And then that's where, that's where we're agreeing at. I need us to, I want to see a larger gain on the amount of savings that we have, so that we can actually put more money into those eight years. Because right now, we don't have a sufficient amount of money, in my humble opinion, going into those middle schools and those elementary schools, so that those kids can have the experience that you're talking about. They're, what happens if we lose them, or we, we, they lose their desire for education, because it doesn't look like the spaces that we're sending them into, that they actually, it shows that we care about them, and we care about their education, when you do have a, an ugly green where there got tiles falling out of the ceiling. I mean, we're on, I agree with you 100%. My, my push on, on the, on the spending is that I need us to save as much money as we possibly can. There's no question we need to make sure that the high schools get, get what they need. Jefferson needs what it needs. I just feel like we got $366 million, and we can build a school with Jefferson with that $366 million. And the money that we put into the bond, the additional $120 million that we put into the bond for Jefferson, we could actually use that to do some HVAC systems, to do some, you know, some, redo some portables, do something in the middle schools and elementary schools. I just feel like there's got to be a way we can get more money. That's all I'm saying with the pushback.
You know, I think it comes back to fully funded education. We can't count on the bond to fix everything that's wrong in Portland Public Schools. And it's, it's a yes and. You know, we need to pass the bond, and we need to fully fund education in the state, not just for Portland Public Schools, but for schools across the state.
I have a question for Herman. So I know you've been pushing this-
I have to step out.
Sure.
But please continue. Thank you.
I know you've been kind of pushing for this, you know, throughout however many board meetings. I guess my question is, what's the holdup? I mean, why hasn't, there's been a bigger discussion on the board? Why is it still a discussion on the board? I mean, what response have you gotten?
Because of the bond.
Yeah.
Because of the bond. So people, in my humble opinion, in my humble, humble opinion, people don't want to bring this up out of fear that the community may, the community may start running away from it, saying, well, they're, they're not doing, they're not doing the right things. And so I don't want to, I don't want to give my money. And, and you're asking for two, you know, they're asking for the, we have a scarcity mindset. And I believe that, I believe if we tell our community the truth, if we tell our community, this is what it is, we, we're only going to be able to do this, we need more. If you give us this, then we'll be able to get more in the meantime. Because we do need money. We need more money from the state. The bond is not going to solve all of our problems. The bond will only take care of buildings. And, because money from the bond can only go towards buildings. We need additional funding because of the people that are actually in the buildings. So now, when we start talking about what the educators are going to be doing in those buildings, that you're making a bigger building, you need more custodial staff. You need more nutrition services staff. You know, we're spreading teachers then. And, and so now, we're, we're doing a lot, but we could do so much more if we had additional funds coming in from all over. I think the, I think the fear of, everybody might say no, and they may not support it, is causing people to, to not want to talk about it at all. My opinion is that that's what's making people not want to vote on it, because we're not talking about it. I feel like we need to put it all out there. We need to be extremely transparent. We need to say, this is what it is. We need to show, open up the books and show, this is what we're doing. This is how we're doing. This is where that went. And then if we need to pivot, then let's be bold enough to say it's time to pivot, instead of trying to, you know, cover that up and try to act like it wasn't an issue. This didn't give us the return that we thought we were going to get. I think we need to do something different. But if we bring- But if we bring everybody to the table, that's why I've been saying lately, it needs to be shared accountability. Because it shouldn't just be us as a district making a decision for the people. It should be us as a district bringing all the people that are going to be, um, partakers in, in what we're doing to the table, right? So it should be, the community should be in there, the PAT should be in there, the, the, um, the district staff should be in there, the CBO should be in there. We should all be talking about, this is what we're doing, this is what we have, how are we going to make it work? And then we should all be willing to sacrifice something. There should be a little, well, I can give up this if it can give us that, and I can give us this. But we, we're in this space where we're just, we're fighting against one another, when we all want the same thing. But we're trying to protect our silo, and personally, I'm just not a fan of that. I'm a fan of, let's just throw it all out there, and the best, you know what I'm saying? The, the best decision is the one that wins.
Sure, and Michelle, I mean, I'm curious, would you have kind of taken this approach to both the bond and the bond, like, the bond development and the bond campaigning? And I'm curious, you, do you have any outstanding questions about the bond that you would have maybe posed as a board member? Um, and yeah, I mean, generally what your, your take on, if you guys are.
You know, and like I said, I think, um, I think taking a hard look at the numbers and making sure that we're spending wisely, uh, is really important. Um, you know, it's hard to say, um, what questions I might have had, had I been in, in Herman C. Um, I, I do have questions around, I mean, some of the things that we are, um, hoping to resolve with the bond are also things that came up in bargaining during the strike. Um, and so, really, like, the questions that I have are more about, um, why, why those things were so tough to negotiate over during the strike, when they're clearly really significant problems? And I'm, I'm glad that we've got the bond now that will, uh, work on some of those, but some of the, the gains that were made in the strike, um, were around willingness to have exterminators come out and, and look at, at the rodent problem and, uh, some of those environmental conditions. And so, um, you know, really, my, my questions are more about how is it that we allow, well, I, I kind of know how it is, but how it is that we allowed our schools to get in this condition in the first place? To where now, we're, we're having to look at, like, is there going to be enough money for the high schools and doing these things, um, that absolutely have to be done, and there's no question about it?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. I'm curious for both of you how you reconcile, I mean, obviously, projections are projections, so I want to make that incredibly clear as a baseline, but, you know, I mean, over the next eight years or so, Portland Public Schools is expected to lose about, what was it, like, 3,000 high schoolers? Uh, and you're building the, these huge bills.
Uh, I agree.
And so, I would just like to hear how you have kind of reconciled with that, you know, is this the correct way to go? I know people have said also, you know, when you put money into a high school, you're taking money technically on this bond away from another project, which I think you've also kind of indicated a little bit, but, um, yeah, we can start with Michelle and then you.
Yeah, I think that, um, I am not too concerned about the projections, and I'll tell you why. Um, you know, in the, in the early 2000s, we saw a huge population boom in Portland that we weren't really expecting, and we were in a, in a conversation in that moment that was like, oh, we've closed schools, and, and now we wish that those schools were open, our classrooms are overcrowded, we need more seats, da-da-da-da-da-da. Um, I understand what the projections are telling us now. I also think that, um, I mean, like you said, they're projections, right? It's not a crystal ball. Um, I think that we would be wise to anticipate climate refugees coming to Portland. I think we'd be right, wise to anticipate gender refugees, uh, coming to PPS. And I think that, um, if we have high-quality, modernized schools in Portland, that is a draw. That will help build population, that will bring people back to Portland. We're not building schools for, um, you know, the next, next decade or two decades. We're building schools for the next 100 years. And so we really need to be thinking long-term about what that is going to look like. And I think we need to do some anticipating of, um, you know, what's happening on the national scale that might impact, uh, Portland population. And Portland is a pretty hospitable place, uh, for people that are having to leave California due to wildfires, uh, families with trans kids, whose kids won't be safe in the states that they live in, and, uh, will lose access to rights in their schools. So, um, I think that, uh, if we invest in our community and our schools are a part of that, we'll see our community rebound and we'll see population increase again. Um, I'm also a big fan of the community-school model, and I think that there is so much we can do to support kids, support families, support educators, and bring, uh, essential services and basic needs into our schools. And so if our schools, you know, if we're building larger and our, and the population isn't quite back yet, we can still be using our schools as community hubs and offering resources out of those spaces that will draw people from the neighborhood, even if their kids are at different schools, to be able to partake in those resources. We need aftercare like crazy in this city, uh, in this district. So, you know, maybe our schools will be able to have space to provide aftercare for families. Um, families need food support, you know? Maybe we'll be able to have, um, you know, uh, food banks and food support in our schools. Um, clinics, uh, programs like the one that I run, Smart Reading. Um, you know, we would love to be able to do that work after school, meeting kids where they already are. And, uh, right now, most schools, even in the state, don't have space in their buildings for, uh, for partnerships and resources like that. So, I think, um, if we build them, they will come, and I think it's a really important part of revitalizing Portland.
I love that so much. I really do. I love that, though, fantastic.
Thank you.
If we build it, they will come. Oh, that's a fact, that's a fact. Um, so this is actually a question that I was hoping somebody was gonna ask me, because I put together a whole little thing for it. So, my thought was, um, what are we gonna do about the lack in enrollment? Well, the first thing we gotta do is stop ignoring it. Um, I believe that we're seeing a steady decline, um, and it's not gonna change unless we actually do something different. This isn't about, um, numbers, this is about trust. I believe that families choose a place where they believe their children are gonna be safe, they're gonna be seen, and they're going to be successful. And so if we don't, if they don't see that in our district, then they're gonna do something else. So we have to make some changes within our district, so that when families see us, they don't see us as a, uh, a space where their kids are, are gonna be bullied. They don't see us as a space where their kids aren't gonna be seen. They don't see us as a space where their kids are, are not going to matter. But they see us as that space where their kids are gonna be seen, they're gonna thrive, and they're going to, to grow, and we have to change that. Um, I believe the way that we do that is by working on getting our trust back for the community. The community right now, if we're 100% honest and transparent, they don't trust PPS. They don't press, they don't trust that we go do what we say we go do. Why? Because we had 366 million dollars to build Jefferson for a long time, and we ain't done it yet. We got money that, um, we've had to put together a Center for Black, um, Black Excellence, and we ain't spent it yet. So, you know what I'm saying, they, they, they don't trust right now. Then we went through a teacher strike, you know what I'm saying? And, ain't nobody seen that before. It was, we got close, we got close, but we ever, we never actually had one. And this, this fighting and bickering amongst one another has all been volatile, and it's been, it's been reactive, and we're just reacting to situations instead of being proactive to why are we in this space to begin with? So I believe when PPS starts to move in the proactive lane, and we start getting in front of the situations, and we start showing the community, this is what we're doing, and this is how we're trying to change it, and this is how we're trying to improve things, then they're gonna start to get that trust back. We need to do that by prioritizing literacy, um, so that every child, um, leaves third grade, um, knowing how to read, not, you know, still learning how to read. That's part of the work that, um, that Michelle does, that, like, we, our issue is that we do the test by, you know, third grade, and because we haven't done the pre-work, the early work, the, you know, the getting them ready work, they're trying to get ready, and they're not there. And so they, they don't make it. And so what we need to start focusing on is prioritizing literacy in the early grades, so that we can ensure that by the time the kids get where they need to be, and they're gonna take their test, and we're gonna show where they're at, that we know that they know how to read. We need to invest in our school culture. We need to make sure that our schools have a culture that is, is welcoming, it has a sense of belonging, it has a sense of, everybody is, you know, is supposed to be here, that we built this space, we created this space, we designed this space with you in mind, so that you can thrive, so that you can dream, so that you can have vision again. We want, we want to challenge their thinking in that, you know, you thinking that life is this, well, it's actually so much more than that. So we want to give them access and exposure, and we need to be able to do that in our schools. We need to modernize our buildings responsibly, so that people can see they're doing exactly what they said they were gonna do with the money, and this is where it's going, and this is how it worked out. Oh, they made a mistake over there, but they told us about the mistake. And then they went back and they repaired the mistake, and they were upfront about it instead of trying to hide it. We need to expand our partnerships. There was a, a time where Smart used to be in the schools, and then all of a sudden, it moved out of the schools. And other CBOs used to. Oh, okay, I apologize. And I, I feel like they should be in more. This, in my humble opinion, I feel like programs that are teaching our kids how to read early, early on, and how to get them ready, we should be partnering with them and making them a priority, because they're actually helping us get closer to our endgame goal. And it, it's a win for everyone, because now, we're not spending all of our budget. We're partnering on how we spend this budget to get the same, same work done. And then I feel like we need to be doing more about creating, um, innovative school models. I want, and when I put, when I say that, what I mean is, I want to see us trying new things within our schools. Every single solitary school should have some type of, uh, STEM program, some type of career tech program. Maybe it's the dual immersion programs, something that is challenging our kids to the, to the next level. Never, never pacifying them with, with mediocre, like, oh, it's okay, it's okay. No, no, the bar is here, and I know that you can get to it. So I'm gonna put every tool in place, so that I can make sure that you reach this, because I never want you to settle for a seat.
Sure. I guess, though, to pivot back to kind of the original question, I think there's kind of a struggle for us to understand, like, so nine modernizations, say you have these nine schools, some of them have like 500 to 1,000 students in them. And then I guess I've been talking to people who say, well, if you have 500 to 1,000 students, eventually the district's gonna get to a place where it's gonna have to operationally manage all of these high schools, but then there's gonna be students in there, I mean, there's gonna be so few students in there that they're gonna have to start maybe sacrificing programming or something else from these high schools. I mean, what do you make of that?
People will come back. People, people, if you, if you create a space, if you build it, they will come. If you create a space that shows, that shows a family, that my kids can thrive here, that my kids will grow here, that my kids will learn here, that my kids will be welcomed here, then that is an attractive space to be in, and people will come back. They're leaving because they don't feel like they're seeing that there. If we get in front of it, and we get proactive, and we start showing our families and showing our community that PPS is a destination spot, this is where you want to be. All of our kids are graduating at this rate, and it's real. All of our literacy records are at this rate, and it's real, it's tangible. We didn't just let them go out to school because they got too big for the seat. But they can literally show you more than just the standardized test, because a standardized test is just one lens of looking thing. But we have looked at holistically how we're serving our kids, how they're doing in the classrooms, how they're doing outside of the classrooms, and we can show you from a holistic approach how our kids are growing and how they're better. When, when that starts happening, people are going to start wanting to come back to PPS.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I think when we're, I think what I'm struggling to figure out is, like, if we're talking about fiscal responsibility with this bond, and that's a particular concern of yours.
Correct.
It feels like if, if we are so hell-bent on, you know, talking about fiscal responsibility and how the, how this, how the district is gonna be spending these bond dollars, and yet we are working off of the premise of if we build it, they will come. Those two things just feel very ironic almost when placed together. Help me understand that.
Okay, so, I love these questions. This is fantastic, thank you. The, the if we build it is a proactive mindset. It's thinking about not where the kids are now, but where is it that the kids are going to be? That's the if we build, build something proactively that doesn't look at, we've got, we, this school only has X number of kids. This school only has X number of that. What is it that's going to draw the next 500 kids that we need into this space?
Shouldn't our finances be spent on the children we have now, rather than children that don't exist?
But the bond can only go, bond money, when we start talking about bond money, bond money can only go to buildings. It can't go to, it can't go to programming, it can't go to, um, curriculum, it can't go to staffing, it can't go to any of those things that our kids are going to be, um, be able to benefit from outside of the physical space that they're going to, they're going to be in. So when we start talking about bond dollars, the bond dollars are saying to create a space where which our kids can thrive. The additional dollars that we need to get in from the state, the additional funding that we need from, uh, from around the, around Oregon, that all of our schools need, that money has to come from the feds or the state.
I guess, why are we asking for a 1.8 billion dollar bond from voters when it seems like what our problem really is right now is that we need to support our existing kids better? Why are we going to taxpayers and asking?
Because we need to ask for both. If we don't ask for the bond dollars, then these buildings fall down. If we don't get this bond, have you been to Cleveland? Ceiling tiles are falling off of the, falling off of the ceiling. Those high school students don't deserve to be in a school where the tiles are falling down, and, you know, we've got elementary schools where kids are, you know, sharing spaces with rats. We, you don't think we need to be spending money on getting those schools in a better position as to where, that when the kids come to school, they're in an environment where they can actually grow and thrive and want to be there? We got kids that are taking pictures and videos of like, look at my school, and look at, that's not a, that's not a place that they want to be. They're not, they're not proud and excited about being there. We have to fix these buildings, and we, we have to do something about it now. And the money that we're spending on them, we can't, we can't just look at, let's address this issue, because we're, we're building schools for 100 years. So we need to think forward-wise as to where, not only do we need this now, but this is what they're going to need in 20 years, this is what they're going to need in 30 years, this is what they're going to need in 50 years. And simultaneously, while we're going after these bond dollars, and while we're building our schools and we're retrofitting them and making them safe for everyone else, we need to go back to the state, and we need to go back to the feds and say, what you have given us is not enough. Thank you, but I need more. I need an additional, so, in order to get level, in order to get level this year, what I, the message that I sent to Governor, uh, Governor Kotek at the time was that we need an additional $1 billion, just to not have to let people off. Why can't we get this money? We can take this money from here, 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 and here, spread it across the board. I, I've continued to say that. Anytime you check a receipt, you're gonna hear me say, spread this across the board. Everybody should be sacrificing a little bit for our kids, if our kids are the priority. Slivers, if everybody gave us a little, we could do a lot.
Sure.
But everybody is holding on.
Sorry, at risk of this becoming a bond debate when it's a school board candidate interview, I, I think another, you know, thing that really does attract families to schools is when, you know, students perform well at those schools. I mean, Oregon is, PPS is better than state average, for sure, but Oregon is pretty much dead last if you adjust for demographics in terms of fourth grade reading, fourth grade math. Um, I'm gonna start with Herman, but I also definitely want to hear Michelle's opinion on this. I know when you were in this endorsement room the last time in 2021, you said that one of your big priorities pretty much was that you wanted to bridge these gaps between, you know, like, students of color, black and brown students, and, um, you know, white and Asian students in PPS, and how they've achieved differently over the years. I mean, uh, since the pandemic, I think I looked at the latest post-secondary results or whatever, divided by demographic, it didn't look like it had gotten any, it, it looked like it had gotten worse. I mean, outcomes for Oregon students have gotten worse over these last four years. I mean, what work have you put in on the board to influencing student outcomes? You know, what can you do differently in the coming years if you are to get reelected?
The, the numbers haven't changed. I'm not gonna try to sit here and act like, oh, man, these numbers have, have gone up. The numbers haven't, in, in my humble opinion, I feel like they, I feel like the numbers have gotten worse.
Yeah.
I, I don't feel like, we, we've seen the, the advancements that we should have been seeing. I, I think there's a, there's a huge disconnect on how we, how we educate and how we support, um, kids of color. When it comes to accountability, there, there is no accountability, in, in my humble opinion. That, we, we need to, we're looking at one way of testing, and we don't want to change that. We're looking at curriculum that's, that's outdated, and it's not culturally, it's not culturally relevant. The curriculum was over 20 years old, and now we're still fighting about how to, how to push the curriculum, how to use the curriculum, whether or not this is the, this is the right curriculum. We're not getting on the same page, we're not rowing in the, in the same direction. And I can continue, I can continue, and I will, to talk about this is an issue, and we need to make it more public. We, we spend a lot of our time in these board meetings talking about stuff that really should be happening in like, uh, a work session or something. Our board meetings, and I don't know why we, we can't seem to get enough of us to, to say, okay, that we need to spend most of our time focusing on student achievement and how we're seeing these numbers. We're not measuring it, we don't want to talk about it. And the moment I start bringing up the fact that, you know what, I'm gonna start saying, until we see different stuff, that, you know, our kids are illiterate. Then I start getting emails, I start getting the, the text messages. Herman, you can't say that, you can't say this. Okay, well, show me some different. Herman, you can't say that, you can't say this. Okay, well, show me some different data. Show me some different data. We can't, we can't afford to not say something or not do something out of fear of how it might offend someone if the, if the data itself isn't changing. The thing that you measure is the thing that we'll start to see some change in. Because nobody wants to keep looking at the same ugly number. I believe that we need to make that a part of every single solitary meeting. Where are we at with this data? Where are we at with this achievement? What have we done to raise the scores? Where are we at with this? Why is the gap not going in? That should be a part of every single solitary board meeting. But it takes the, the person setting the agenda to make that a priority. Right now, I believe we have in our district an issue with, with board governance. Because I believe the board should be the ones driving the, driving the district. And we shouldn't be sitting around rubber stamping everything that, that, well, staff said it's okay, so it must be okay. We should be challenging on every single solitary term. And there's not a lot of us that, that wanna, wanna challenge.
Sure. And Michelle, I'd like to hear your perspective as to how, you know, the board could influence student outcomes and what the role would look like for you.
Yeah. I mean, if elected to the board, student outcomes are my top priority. Our kids are not meeting reading and math benchmarks, science benchmarks. Post-graduation readiness is not where it needs to be and of course, this is all compounded for students of color, students from low wealth communities. I think that student outcomes and improving student outcomes is holistic. Some of it is about the bond, right? Like student outcomes are going to be impacted by learning environments. Student outcomes are also going to be impacted by the amount of care and attention that we are spending on improving those literacy and math skills and that has to be a laser focus for the district. But improving student outcomes also requires us to support our teachers and educators, make, making sure that they have the tools and resources and supports that they need to do their jobs to the best of their abilities. And it requires that we invest in equitable and inclusive schools. Kids aren't safe at school right now. The school buildings aren't, they're not healthy, they're not safe, they're not conducive for learning. It also, it also requires support of our families. Like it's really, it's really an ecosystem that our kids exist in. And, you know, I think some of what we're seeing in terms of student outcomes is just reflective of how hard things are for families right now and the ways that families are struggling. So I would like to see the district take a more holistic approach and really be looking at all of these pieces. How are we supporting families? How are the conditions in our buildings? What initiatives are we focusing on from an academic perspective? I think that, you know, the, the board's role is one of oversight and, you know, being that, that accountability check and measure. So, you know, from my perspective, I would bring forward policy proposals that, that do those things, that are focused on reading and math, that are focused on making sure that teachers are well-resourced and have the time and materials that they need in order to meet the individual needs of the students in their classes. And that our, our schools are communities that are supporting the basic needs of families. Because families just don't have the resources, the capacity, the time to fill in all the gaps. And so that's something that I would like to see us do more of at a district level. And I think that the board can lead the way in that in terms of policy.
Yeah, absolutely. I know you've brought up, you know, educators and I know that you've, you know, well, I respect to them, I know you've been endorsed by the Portland Association of Teachers as well. I, I would just like to hear from you if there's, you know, any place where you feel that you have shown independence from the union and from the union's values and what that would, what that is.
Yeah, I'm so glad you asked. I mean, I agree with the union on a lot of things. I'm an educator. I spent 20, 25 years in early childhood classrooms. So when they talk about, you know, class sizes that are too big, I know, I know that experience. I know what that's like. I know how hard it is to see your kids, to know what they need and literally not have the bandwidth to give it to them. But I don't agree with teachers on everything, you know. I think that, I'm, I'm a very independent person and I speak my mind and go with what I think regardless of who, who the other stakeholders are, who's endorsed me. I think one area where I have some disagreement with teachers or with the union is in terms of hiring and firing. I am of the era as a former PPS student. I had Norm Scott at Belmont as a PE teacher and I had Mitch Whithurst as a counselor at Lincoln High School. Both of those people are adjudicated sex offenders. It was known while we were students that these were not safe people to be around. And when we complained to the adults in charge, we were told that you can't say those things about educators, you'll ruin their careers and their reputations. Those people should have been fired a long time ago and they were protected by the union. That's not something that I agree with. You know, there are other things that I disagree with the union on. I think that we should be looking at increased compensation for teachers who are willing to work and stay in the schools that are most challenging and put in that time and, and effort. And I think that they should be compensated for that. I know that's something that the union doesn't agree with, but, you know, I'm in favor of doing whatever it takes to make sure that our kids who are furthest from opportunity have the best access and the best resources that we can make available to them.
Oh, are you still on the Board of Equitable Giving Circle?
I am.
I'm just curious. I did some report, I mean, I never ended up publishing anything, but I, I, you know, I got quite a few tips about that organization. And I think there were some very real concerns from some of the farmers that they had worked with that had their, for, I didn't totally understand, I mean, I'm not totally at liberty to say everything about what I learned, but there were some real hard feelings about the leadership at Equitable Giving Circle and some of the farmers of color that had worked with them and had felt really betrayed by that organization and by that leadership. I'm just curious what your take on that is.
You know, there are some situations that I'm aware of where there were, there were things that happened that were decisions made by staff that I know leadership didn't agree with and those staff left the organization. In terms of other, other, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to really know.
Sure. So, I mean, I will say, the majority of the farmers that I spoke to at the time, their issue was directly with the executive director, not, not staff.
Yeah. You know, I can't really speak to that. What I can say is that the executive director is a very direct and straightforward person. She doesn't pull any punches. You know, I'm not really sure how those conversations went or what they were about in nature specifically. But I know that we continue to work with BIPOC-owned farms and have some long, longstanding relationships with those partners. What Equitable Giving Circle does is new and innovative and is work that we've been told is impossible to do successfully and we've been doing it for five years. So, you know, I will be the first to admit that there have been bumps in the road and, you know, wrinkles to iron out as we figure out how to feed and support this many people through the bounty of BIPOC-owned farms at no cost to the people that we serve. So, not perfect, but what I, what I can say about our executive director is that she's always open to learning and growing and trying to do things differently. And, you know, I think we all try to move through this world causing as little harm as possible and, and doing the good that we can. And sometimes in spite of our best efforts, we still cause harm. But one thing that I definitely respect about AJ is, you know, her ability to make repair when, when she feels like it's needed and, you know, to, to change, change course and do things differently when that's called for also.
Great. And then I think the final question we have for you both is, obviously you guys align on a number of issues, including more school funding and all this stuff. I mean, what is the, because we have to pick between the two of you, what is the primary disagreements or what are the primary disagreements that you two have with each other?
I don't have a disagreement with Michelle. If I wasn't voting for myself, I'd vote for her. There's, I don't see a loss here. I, I don't see a loss for our kids. I don't see a loss for our community. I don't. And I've told her this, I've, I've told her as such. I believe she's an amazing candidate. I believe that what she would bring to the, to the community is, is great. I believe that what she does is good. I don't have a disagreement with her at all. I do still believe that I am the person to move forwards. I believe that one of the things that I, that I learned, and it has, and it's not because of her, it's because of what, what I know about where we're at now. One of the things that I've learned as being on the, being on the board is when you first come on, they, they fire hybrid you. They, they give you, they give you all these books, they give you all this stuff. We do a terrible job, absolutely terrible job of onboarding. And it's one of the things I've been trying to figure out, how we can do a much better job of onboarding new, new board members that are gonna be coming on so that it's not so much of a, you get here and then it's go, 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 we give you all this stuff. And so for the first, my first year, I'm gonna say I'm, I'm a very honest person. My first year, I feel like it was a trash year. I feel like it was a trash year because all I could do for the first year was take in this information and they're just giving it to you. You gotta read this, you gotta know this, you gotta memorize this policy, you gotta understand that policy. You gotta come to this meeting, you gotta come to that meeting. So you go to these meetings and the only thing you're doing is like, well, what has the staff already done? And the staff said, well, we've done this, this, this and this, and we've already done this and we've secured this and it's ready to go. We're just, you know, we just need board approval. So for the first year, it was like a rubber stamp. And it was a trash year. It was a trash year because no one prepares you for the politics of a school board. You come into the school board and you don't realize just how political everything is until you actually get there. And you start seeing the, the bidding and the body for votes and all this, and it's, it's trash. And then you get a voice. And then when you get your voice, they wanna push back against it. And you have to be the one to stand up and say, no, I know who I am, I know what I'm supposed to be doing. I know the role that I, I have now and this is just, this is the direction we're going. If you don't like it, vote it down, but this is the direction that I'm going in. And it takes time, it takes time for that. And so again, I, I don't trust my first year. I pray that I didn't make too many bad decisions that, that first year. But it felt like a rubber stamp. I know what I'm doing right now and I am pressure. They don't like me because I am pressure. I know the, I know the role that I play. I know what it is that I can do, I know what it is that I can't do. And you can't tell me stuff that I, that I already know now. And so now when I come into this as my new, my new seat and I'll be coming in for four years strong, I come in with all the knowledge that I've learned over the last, over the last four years. I come in with all the board protocol that I, I now understand over the last four years. I come in understanding and knowing all the policies that they're gonna bring up so they don't have to get me up to speed on this policy and what was done there. They don't have to start all over telling me this is what we've, where we've gone and this is where we've been because I was the one doing it. And so now this four years is going to be, I'm pressure. I, I am pressure and people don't like that. And so that's why personally, I don't believe it's her that doesn't want me there. I believe that there are people out there to be like, no, he needs to go because he is not going to let up. In every meeting, the last few meetings, if you go back and check the receipts, you'll see I've been asking the same stuff. Why are we still behind? What are we doing about this? No, I'm not going to move on from this. We, this is what we need to be addressing. And we're in a season where right now people wanna be comfortable, but change doesn't happen in comfort. Change happens in discomfort and that's what I am. I'm a uncomfortable pressure.
So when I decided to run, Herman and I had a conversation and we talked about running for the same seat, not running against one another. Pastor Green does a lot of great work in the community. We share a passion for literacy. And I know that if he's reelected, that's something that he'll promote and I'm, I'm happy about that. I'm running for what I can bring to the board and, you know, I thought, I thought long and hard about it because it's, it's the toughest volunteer job in town and comes with a lot of pressure, you know. You know, people are always mad at you, whatever, that's fine. But, you know, I think that I'm the best fit for this position because of the decades that I have experienced teaching children, working with families as an administrator, scaling curriculum and professional development on the national scale, on the statewide, state, on the statewide scale. This is kind of nerdy and embarrassing to admit, but I mean, I, you know, I'm that parent that just watches school board meetings and listens to the education podcasts and reads the stuff even though I don't have to. But because it's, it's my work, it's my calling, it's what I've done since I was young. My mom was an educator, my grandmother was an educator. It's really, it's in my blood, it's in my heritage. My kids are in the schools now and they can't wait. So there is nothing more urgent to me than getting PPS turned around and turning it into a district that is worthy of our kids. My big kid has cerebral palsy and our neighborhood middle school is Oakley Green. He couldn't go to Oakley Green because they don't have an elevator. Our schools are not ADA compliant. That's wild. But what's even more wild is that we don't have a policy or a process for when a child's neighborhood school can't accommodate them physically. So our kids with special needs and disabilities have to be better represented by our district and that's something that I don't hear at the board level. I mean, I haven't heard in the decade that I've been listening to and watching school board meetings. I don't see that show up. I don't hear us talk about sped unless we're making cuts. I have a, I have a kid who's gender diverse and the stuff that's coming from the federal government is really scary. And I am here to fight for my kid, for kids like my kids, for all of our kids. And whether that is about, you know, our kids' ability to access ethnic studies curriculum and receive a well-rounded education that, that tells the truth about the contributions that all people have made to this country, that is important and that's something the federal government is going to try to shut down. Whether that is having bathrooms and locker rooms and spaces that are safe for every kid so that they can just go to freaking PE or use the restroom and go on about their day, that is something, you know, that the federal government is going to try to come down on us for and I'm here to fight for that. And of course, our special education students. So, you know, like I said, there is nothing more important to me. And this is the season for me that I can, I can make that difference. When I think about the challenges that we face, I know that I have the skills and experience to take those on and to collaborate with other board members, the district, the teachers. I really think it's important that we change the tone, which has been very adversarial, a lack of trust as Director Green spoke about for a number of years. And in order to weather the storms that we're facing, we really need to be collaborative and innovative in our leadership and that's something that I bring to the board.
Great. Thank you both. And we have one final, very fun question. So when you were a young kid, what was your favorite childhood snack?
Oh, wow. Let's go, let's go, let's go. I would have to say for me, it was the toasted peanut butter and jelly sandwich. I didn't like, it's not that I didn't like the regular, but my grandmother would toast the bread and the toasted peanut butter and jelly, it was the absolute best. And it's better, it changes with every jelly. So when you, like, oh my goodness, I'm having a nostalgic moment. So when you toast the bread and, you know, it comes right out the little, we didn't have a toaster, we had to put it in the oven. And so she would put the little butter on the, on the bread and the, and she would never do the whole thing. It was just the middle. So in the middle is a soft spot on both sides and the butter.
This makes my mouth water.
And the, the butter, once the butter hit the strawberry jelly or the grape jelly, it gave it a different flavor. Oh my goodness. Now I'm gonna go home and try it. I would have to say for me, that's it.
Nana snacks are the best.
They are the best.
Okay, I don't know if I can wax as poetic as her on this one, but my favorite snack growing up is still my favorite snack and it's popcorn with butter and nutritional yeast, which is like such a like Portland hippie snack, but it's bomb. And then if you don't know about nutritional yeast on popcorn.
It's cheesy, right?
Yeah, kinda cheesy. I take it, I take it as a plot back to the movie theater. And like nobody in my house thinks that anyone else can make popcorn because of the way that I do it, but I really just put the nutritional yeast on it. Anyone can do it. There's a lot of things that moms do that everybody tries to act like only moms can do.
Absolutely.
Well, great. Thank you both so much for. Well, great. Thank you both so much for being here. I appreciate it. Brian, you got on the recording. Great.